The September 13th Special Meeting for a Budget Hearing of the Niles Main District Library at 7:00 PM. Please take the roll.
Trustee Kadir?
Here.
Trustee Durblek?
Here.
Trustee Schoenfeld?
Here.
Treasurer Botello?
Present.
Secretary Rosansky?
I am here, precious.
Vice President Trunko?
Here.
And President Keen?
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a list? Yeah, Margaret's getting it.
I got it.
Thank you.
Elliot Ostrom.
Good evening, Board. This is Elliot Ostrom. As usual, I am addressing my comments to the entirety of the Board. As usual, I've given copies of these comments to your interim Executive Director so she can provide them to you for you to follow along. That means everybody can follow along. And as usual, my nine declarative statements that I will be neither silenced nor interrupted, nor will we, nor will the community; that I will remember the Board's actions and statements, both good and bad, as will we, as will the community; and I will gladly and proudly vote honor before April 1, 2025, at the next election or early voting, as will we, as will the community, in our continuing effort to reclaim our library. Tonight is a public hearing on the proposed budget ordinance for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, and taking us to June 30, 2024. This proposed budget is including major advances in an effort to coordinate advanced planning, in an effort to coordinate strategic planning, and in an effort to correct major strategic errors committed in the last 28 months or so of temporary hiring freeze, of significant tax levy decreases despite campaign promises that they would not result in firings of staff or reductions in programming, reductions in budgets due to that significant tax levy decrease, of disparaging, look it up, the staff, and of disregarding of professionals' opinions regarding proper procedures and recommended actions. Where does that leave us tonight? The last eight months since the installation of your seventh member have brought us to the end of the hiring freeze and the hiring of personnel to replace those who had left. This requires greater funding for personnel expenses. It also requires greater consideration for training of the new personnel, not to mention continuing education and professional development for current staff. These expenses are necessary for the staff to realize that they are respected. In the past, the staff has had various peer recognition for various departments. Continuing to encourage professional development and training will help encourage staff morale. This was a difficult budget to negotiate. I realize that. There's a lot of compromise. It looks to be a sufficient budget proposal to meet the needs of the library and the library community as well. Congratulations on your work. Thank you and good night.
Mike Movito?
Good evening, Board. It's been a while since I've stood face to face with all of you. I generally pride myself on my way with words, but tonight I felt that your own words may have a larger impact. We're here to discuss the library's budget, so I figured we should revisit some past on-the-record comments made by members of the current board. During the lead-up to the most recent election, Tom Robb asked every candidate to complete a questionnaire that was then published in the Niles Journal. According to then-Trustee Keen's comments published on March 10th, quote, "The areas most severely affected by the recent budget cuts are staff salaries and building maintenance," unquote. Candidate Trunko said on March 15th, quote, "Currently, the library's staff is the most underfunded aspect of our library," unquote. Trustee Kadir, in his comments on March 17th, quote, "Both staff compensation and building maintenance have been severely impacted by the budget cuts," unquote. And candidate Botello, in his comments on March 23rd, quote, "Underfunded areas are salaries to library staff. Salaries for staff should reflect compensation comparable to librarians in the surrounding areas," unquote. Now, I wholeheartedly agree with all of these comments, but when I took a look at the proposed budget ordinance, I couldn't help but notice that the total salary line item is actually $900 less than the previous year's budget ordinance, which was passed by the previous board, and total employee fringe benefits are actually down by $25,000. The math just isn't mathing for me. In his published comments, Mr. Trunko also said, quote, "If our board works together and truly believes in transparent government, there is no reason why we should not be able to cut legal fees by 20% to 25%," unquote. Legal fees in this proposed budget ordinance are up by more than $20,000 this year over last year. Now, to the Board's credit, the budget for building and maintenance has nearly doubled from last year, although anecdotally, I am a little concerned with how that money might be spent to improve cleaning protocols. Whenever my boys crawl around and play on the carpet in the kids' space, they are absolutely filthy. We have pictures. They're covered in dirt and dust and grime and whatever else happens to be stuck in that carpet that clearly hasn't been cleaned. Just a side note to consider with your budget allocations. On March 18th, during the candidate debate, Mr. Kadir stated, quote, "If we want to have the best staff at this library, we have to pay them and provide them with the benefits that are in accordance with what the top-of-the-line individuals make at other libraries," unquote. In response to the very same question, Mr. Trunko said, quote, "Our staff is severely overworked and underpaid. I would be in heavy support to get this done immediately," unquote, this being in reference to the union contract. The staff still do not have a union contract, and I highly doubt that they would have felt the need to protest last month's regular board meeting if they felt fairly compensated for their work. If you actually believe your own words, then do right by the staff. Otherwise, did you really reclaim our library? Thank you.
I would like to...
No, thank you.
I'm allowed to, and I would like to...
No, you're not.
Yes, I am.
All right, you know what? Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead, but you know what? I would like to discourage any further comments after this. Thank you. Okay, sorry for your discouragement, but as a trustee, I would like to thank you for coming here to share your comments, but I'd like to just point out a few inaccuracies because it's important that we all understand the facts that we're all working with to come up with a resolution that will be satisfactory to everyone. One of your comments was that you looked at the budget and that staffing salaries have decreased. When we look at staffing, especially with this new board, there have been many additional benefits that have been added to staffing, and our total staffing costs for this new budget are $4,951,079. Last year, our total staffing costs were $4,471,000. We have increased our staff cost $479,515. And then, in addition to severely being overworked, I just want to reflect again, and I do this often, on our statistics that remind us every month of the number of staff and the hours and then the number of the decline in patron attendance and the decline in borrowings. Last year, April 17th of 2022, it was a very popular time in the library. We had 1,945 staff hours to fill our 66-hour library. That is greatly overlapping throughout the day, so there really wasn't a shortage in April of '22. But I also want to remind you that at that same time, the library was continuing to decline and struggle with 49% down in patron visits and borrowings. So if the numbers of borrowings and the number of patron visits are down 50%, you need to understand that's also a decrease in staff tasks. This place is more empty than it's filled, and we are working earnestly to turn that around. But we need to be clear about the information that we present, but I thank you for coming here this evening.
Excuse me.
I would like to remind trustees that, you know, responding to all the public comments, yes, we have the right to do it, whether or not we need to do that. Really, this is not the forum for that. This is for the public to talk to us, not necessarily for us to talk back to the public. I do want everyone to know that one trustee's opinion does not necessarily mean it is another trustee's opinion. Thank you. And just to clarify, anything I present... I think you're done. Anything I present in a board meeting can be reviewed on the library's website. All my information is documented. Thank you. All right. All right, thank you. Who's next on the list?
I have one.
Okay, whoever would like to give comment is welcome to.
I don't like to speak in public, but I have reached my limit. My name is...
Yes, just speak a little clearer. I'm sorry, it's hard to... You're soft spoken.
You don't hear me in my mind. Okay. Okay. If I didn't learn anything else from the previous board, it is appropriations. Appropriations can be used for union negotiations. Do it.
Thank you. My name is Renee. I use the pronouns she and her. This time last year, at the last budget hearing, so many of us were hopeful for how the budget process for this library's 2023-2024 budget year could be better, but the budget meetings this summer were a disappointment. Watching most of the trustees up here undermine and disrespect library staff, try to cut things without finding out what they even were, asking department heads who'd already done the work needed to do to let you know what the library's needs were for the year, asking them to go back to the drawing board and quickly tell you what they could continue to do without for another year, and then those of us who follow this board's meetings had to watch several of you willy-nilly slashing here and there, alternately saying you were just following what the department had said they could do without, or saying you don't want to go along with what they said they could do without. Trustee Trunko described how he was so proud of being able to march in a parade this summer that he wanted to increase the budget for $1,000 more for candy to throw into a few streets in Niles on one day of the year and increase the budget for some kind of knickknacks for some Chamber of Commerce new resident buckets. I assume he meant Niles Chamber of Commerce, and I assume those are only for new residents in the Niles half of the library district. Then he spent billable hours that we all have to pay for for Kleinfeld and Jenkins to help him figure out how to squirrel away $2 million of previously budgeted funds. More parade candy is not the sort of priority that he or anyone else here campaigned on. Six months ago, while campaigning, four of you gave lip service to an urgent need for this library's staff to have a contract with wages that would retain the remaining staff and attract candidates to fill vacancies. But here we are in September. It's the third annual budget hearing since this library's union formed, where after three years of being disrespected by this library's board, some amazing staff are continuing to serve the community and keep this library running without a contract, without the kind of salaries and benefits that they deserve and that so many members of this board promised while campaigning. If you'd prioritized the contract negotiations instead of wasting so much time on trying to change Policy 3.27 so that people who Jason Trunko doesn't want to have to hear from would have to wait until the middle of the night to publicly address this board and time arguing with each other about how to quickly put those $2 million in unspent funds from the last two years out of the reach of the board, some of which could have been spent on staff salaries if you'd prioritized a fair contract with the union. We shouldn't be here in mid-September talking about another budget that doesn't take a union contract into account, even though, yes, appropriations can be used and will need to be used for that. But we shouldn't be budgeting for a ton of legal fees for another year when, if you'd just gotten the union contract done, you wouldn't have to keep spending so much money on trying to bust the union. Please do better. Remember that only half of this library district is in Niles, and remember that whatever your proud feelings and personal priorities are, that is not what should be guiding your decisions. The needs of the community that you are all tasked with serving should be top of mind. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Aileen. I work at the Niles Library here, and I'm hoping that just about everybody here recognizes me because I was one of the employees that walked the streets and I rang the doorbells with your cards in my hand, asking everybody to vote for you. On those cold days, I walked over and I stood outside that post office and outside the village hall with your cards in my hand, asking people over and over to vote for you. I told my family, which a lot of us live here in Niles, I live in Niles, we all pay our taxes to this library. I'm still waiting for a union contract that myself and all my coworkers, who have worked so hard to just get it to the point where we could sit back and be proud that we work here and we can be proud that we elected the board that we did and we worked for you in good faith, and we are just looking for you to fulfill that good faith promise and to make us feel proud for what we did because right now, we don't feel anything, and that's not right because we still continue to work here, and we work and we're waiting. So please just get our contract. We're just asking for what's fair. We're not asking for anything that is outrageous. We just want what's fair. You know, those of us who hung around through the pandemic, through this last board, see us, we're still here. Thank you.
I'd like to respond to that. I full-heartedly stand by the words that I said, where I still think the staff is overworked and underpaid. I do not buckle away from that. What I will say, though, is that in the last three months that this board has been in place, because it's only been, we're going on month four now, we have been able to complete more line items on the union negotiation than the prior year and a half of the prior board. So we are making strides and we are getting there, and we can't go into detail, as you know, in public, but we have done more in the last three months than the 18 months prior with the other board. So we are doing what we said we would do, but we also asked everybody when we swore in, multiple people up here said, give us a little time. We've lost an executive director. We've found things that were done incorrectly by the past treasurer that we had to do legally. You know, people want to say we hid the $2 million. We legally have to put that money away or rebate it. It could not go to staff salaries. So these are things that we had to do and we weren't aware of when we got up here. Some of this is catching us off guard. I'm not going to say it's not, but we've also had, I think, 12 or 13 meetings in three months. Find me another board that has that many meetings and spends the hours that we have for an elected voluntary position to make sure that we're doing everything we can, not only for the public, but for the staff as well. So, you know, there's a lot that goes with it, but we are still diligently working. Like I said, more things done in the last 90 days than over the last 18 months. So thank you for your comment, though. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Pat?
Let me just stand here. All due respect, Mr. Trunko, couldn't some of this, using Joe McCula as an example, been for you ahead of time? Is there no prep that you guys could have done to educate yourself to the situation here? I mean, come on. There's all kinds of reams and reams of information and past budgets and all kinds of stuff, and to think that you couldn't avail yourself of that and you're going to say, oh, well, didn't we do good in the last three months? You better keep in mind who you're talking to. We've been here for two and a half years listening to crap from that other board, okay? And some of that board is still here. They're still talking like they have no idea what they're talking about, what daily life is like in a library, and it doesn't matter how many damn bodies are in the room. Sometimes nobody comes up to me, there's maybe 20... There's maybe 20 people in the room, but the phone has run 15 times. Jeez. So come around, spend a week in each department, because the sense that we all have is that none of you know what the hell you're talking about, and we're tired. And don't think that we can't be pushed to strike because enough is enough. You need to do something, and some of you need to show up on time when there's a meeting and be ready with the material and put smug attitudes away and deal with us like human beings who are here every day in good faith, okay? And we expect the same respect, and I don't think we're getting it. And, you know, I don't know what more we can say. So if this goes on and on and on, don't think that you can just say whatever you want and we're going to show up and stare at you, and that's going to be the end of it. We are human beings, as Todd said the last time, with bills and sick people and children and every other damn thing. And to constantly be denigrated, especially by trustee Durblech, over and over and over and over again, like we are sucking dogs, eating up all the money in the appropriations is just beginning to be beyond the pale. So get serious. We're serious. You get serious, too, and stop making excuses. You wanted this position. You decided you wanted to run for the Board. Hopefully, you're not going to be like any other damn politician in this country and use it as a stepping stone to something else in this Niles, okay? So come on. Let's go and stop talking to us like we're stupid and like we have, you know, no idea of what is going on. The disrespect now is six feet deep, and that's enough. And I didn't come here to lose my temper, but that's enough. I can't take anymore, and I know a lot of us can't. So get on the stick, please.
I hope you realize we don't all disrespect you.
Is there anyone else that would like to give public comment?
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I just want to say, I just came from the summation class, and you have the best classes at this library of any other library in the entire area. We have great programs and great classes. I missed what she said, but this is probably the best library around anywhere. I have family that is so envious because they don't have libraries that we have up here, and this one is phenomenal.
Thank you.
You guys do a great job.
Thank you.
Can I add to that?
Certainly.
I mean, it's really important to bring the arts back in and the creativity so that people start thinking for themselves, and this is a great library. I wish you would continue to add more art projects and like with the embroidery, you know, maybe put on your next budget to buy that program that you can scan and it'll change it into an embroidery pattern and things like that. It would be really appreciated, and it's just really nice. I mean, the classes are awesome.
Thank you. I think we can go ahead on... Are we ready to take a vote?
No.
No, we've got to adjourn.
We have to...
Oh, we have to close the public hearing? Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second it. Trustee Kadir?
Yes.
Trustee Durblech? Trustee Schoenfeld?
Yes.
Treasurer Batello?
Yes.
Secretary Rosensky?
Yes.
Vice President Trunko?
Yes.
And President Keen?
Yes.
Seven to zero passes.
Okay.